Thank you for joining today's meeting. Before the meeting begins, we would like to remind our guests to remove all hats and silence all electronic devices. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
Hola, mi nombre es Judy Rodriguez, secretaria de planificación de la ciudad de Socorro. Gracias por participar en la reunión de hoy. Antes de que comience la reunión, nos gustaría recordarles a nuestros invitados el favor de quitarse los sombreros y silenciar todos los dispositivos electrónicos. No se tolerará ningún comportamiento perturbador ni exabrupto, y los infractores estarán sujetos a expulsión y posible procesamiento.
Good evening, and we want to start this at all. I want to welcome you all to the December 4th, 2025 Socorro City Council Regular Meeting. And it is now 6:06 PM, and I call this meeting to order. As always, we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, we have some very special guests with us today. We have Ernesto Serna Fine Arts Academy, is that correct? Or do we have Robert Arrojas? We have Robert Arrojas students today that are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated, let's begin.
Hey y'all, before you leave, we also want to recognize you and on behalf of the City Council of Socorro and the entire city of Socorro, we want to acknowledge your efforts and we want to thank you all for being with us here today. We have some certificates that we'd like to give you all. We're going to be calling out five names, I know there's only three of you here, but we can have the, one of the school administrators or teachers take these certificates back to the school so they can give to your buddies at school, okay? So when you hear your names, come up here and receive your certificate. Isaac Montevice.
Damian Amager.
Ms. Marcus.
So, Robert Arrojas is named after our police chief's grandfather, so he's got a lot of pride in that school. We're going to go ahead and establish quorum at this time.
Ruben Reyes.
Here.
Cesar Nevades.
Here.
Alejandro García.
Here.
Mayor Rudy Cruz.
Here.
Gina Cordero.
Here.
And Irene Rojas.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum?
Thank you. At this time, we're going to go ahead and proceed with the public comment portion of our meeting.
Our first speaker is Jeremy Hendricks. Mr. Hendricks, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Jeremy Hendricks, and I live in District Four in the Arterial One project area. Tonight, I want to speak to you about El Paso's proposed road fee on their water bills and what it means for Socorro. I've submitted my written comments to the city secretary, and I respectfully request that those remarks be reflected in the minutes and my written statement be included in the record. Right now, El Paso is considering a new transportation user fee, a monthly charge on their El Paso water bill to help pay for their street repairs. A few dollars every month may not sound like much, but across the whole city, it adds up to a million dollars a year. That's millions, just to keep their existing streets drivable. They are talking about this fee because their current budget cannot keep up their basic road maintenance, even though residents face higher water and wastewater rates. I'm bringing this up because Socorro is headed down that same road. With new roads we cannot afford to maintain, Socorro is relatively lucky. Currently, most of our current corridors are residents' driver every day, which include North Loop, Socorro, Alameda, 375, and Horizon are maintained by TechDOT. TechDOT carries a long-term maintenance burdens on these big roads, which help keep the local streets relatively, the cost relatively low. Arterial One is different, however. This is a city of Socorro project. As the project sponsor, the city of Socorro must find money to build it by the right of ways and then pay for it for decades of overlays, pothole repairs, drainage fixes, and eventually reconstructions once this four-lane city road is built. We own the bill, not TechDOT. That means a future council, like yourselves, will face the same choices that El Paso is facing right now. Will we raise property taxes? Will we add a street fee on our own water and garbage bills? Will we add more debt on top of everything else already discussing for roads infrastructure? I'm asking you to be honest with the residents about the long-term costs before you move an inch further with Arterial One, before advancing this product. You should publish a realistic life cycle cost estimate for Arterial One with a clear explanation of which revenue sources will pay for it. I'm asking the council to make a public comment that you will not impose future transportation fees on Socorro utility bills to pay for the road your own residents have repeatedly asked you not to build. And finally, El Paso's proposed road fee is our warning label. We still have a choice. We can keep the no-build on the table, which is in your emails. I'm referring to the no-build resolution draft that nobody wants to sponsor, and focus on improving the existing state corridors we already have instead of creating a brand-new four-lane city road that our small tax base will be stuck maintaining forever. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
Kyle Greenup. Mr. Greenup, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As a resident of Athena West subdivision, I'm here to comment on Agenda Item Number 35 that you have before you tonight. According to the Texas State Historical Association Handbook online, it gives a little bit of history to the city of Socorro. Part of the history that is stated online reads, "Socorro has disincorporated and reincorporated several times. In 1985, the town blocked El Paso's plan to annex the town and voted by a margin of 263 votes to remain a separate corporation." The reason I bring this up is because we're in a very similar situation as to what Socorro was in 40 years ago. Your forefathers didn't want to be part of El Paso, and I can only assume that it was because they wanted to control their future, or your future, rather, and protect the culture that your community represents. I know this is very important to the city of Socorro because also on the agenda tonight is another item to help protect the Mission Trail, which I commend you for considering that. The position that Socorro was in 40 years ago is very similar to the position that we are in with the communities to the south and east of you. And like I said, I live in Athena West. We just want the opportunity to control our future and to control or help preserve the way of life that we're presently living. That's the reason for the request. I humbly ask the mayor and the council to release us from your ETJ in response to the hundreds of signatures that we've given and in support of this cause. And we promise, if it is released, we will still be very good neighbors. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Greenup. Ms. Navarro, before you call the next public comment speaker, there were some inquiries, and I think that we owe it to our residents to provide some factual statements. So the city would like to provide some factual statements at this time in response to the first public comment that was made. So the city of El Paso has declined the proposed transportation user fee at this time. As a result, no such fee has been adopted. Also notably, the city of El Paso and the city of Socorro differ significantly in terms of population size, infrastructure network, and geographic coverage area. And so consequently, the long-term maintenance obligations and financial impacts faced by each city cannot be directly compared or assumed to be similar. It's also essential to note that the city of Socorro does not own or operate any utilities, including water services. As a separate entity, the Lower Valley Water District is entirely independent of the city of Socorro. So therefore, any reference to the city imposing fees through utility bills is not applicable as we do not issue or control any of the water bills. To ensure transparency, the city of Socorro has taken proactive steps to prepare for long-term roadway maintenance obligations. For example, the Transportation Reinvestment Zone, also known as the TRZ for Nuevo Weko Tanks. This was established in 2010. And so the TRZ currently holds an estimated $7 million, which can be used for the future maintenance of the roadway. This demonstrates how the city has been planning ahead and will continue to prepare responsibly for future infrastructure needs. So these statements are provided to ensure that accurate information is available to the public and that there's no misinformation presented here today or any other day at our council meetings regarding the city of Socorro's financial planning, infrastructure responsibilities, or utility authority. And you can go ahead and call the next public speaker.
James Lowenberg. Mr. Lowenberg, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Is there any way to play the homepage video real quick?
So during public comment, we can engage in, but you know what, what we can do is when Item 35 comes up, we can have discussion, and I think a lot of questions can be answered, and there can be back and forth during Item 35. Yes, sir.
That's fine, so come back.
Yes, absolutely. How many more speakers do we have?
One more.
One more, okay.
Maricela Vias. Ms. Vias, you have three minutes.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
Well, this is the first time I'm here. And the reason I am here for is for number 25, if I'm not mistaken. 24, I'm sorry. So my concern's here with, 10-371 Mansana.
I don't want, I don't want to, we'll stop the clock, okay? Jim, can she speak on any of the items before we get to the item? During public comment, can they address any of the specific items that are on the agenda? Or does she have to wait for 24 to come up? Okay. Do you mind waiting until Item 24 is up on the agenda? That way, we can also engage in discussion as well on that one. When we sign up for public comment, it's kind of like a general. It's not specific to any certain item, but since you referenced a certain item on the agenda, we have to just specify that.
Well, I would rather go because I do need to go to my second job, if y'all don't mind.
Sure thing, you can make a public comment.
Yes, so I'll make a very brief, mainly is my main-
Start her three minutes again, I'm sorry.
My big concern is that they're trying to build some apartments in my backyard. And my main big concern is traffic. We don't have the main in-and-out. Main street is Elsin, the rest, in my understanding, years of living here, they're all farm roads. You know, we recently got approved for some apartments two blocks away. That's going to increase our traffic. The subdivision that is next to Place Road, that has increased our traffic. So that is what my main concern is. Not only for us as residents, but for the school, for safety, for police department, all the way around. That is really what I wanted to bring up, okay?
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it.
I'll make it short because I know I need to go, and I know you guys have your thing to do.
We appreciate your comments, and if there's any other questions that you might have or concerns, you're always welcome to visit our offices and sit with staff, and we'll be more happy to sit with you and answer any questions or-
I sure will do that because I'm very interested. I mean, I'm willing to, you know, I want to see Socorro grow and be better.
Correct.
But we can't if we're still here 50 years ago.
Yeah.
Or plus, because old Socorro has not changed.
Yeah, and so our offices are at 124 Horizon, and you're more than happy to go in there and schedule a meeting?
Correct.
Sit down with your city rep, or myself, or even staff?
Can you let me know who is the representative?
Your city rep is going to be Ms. Gina Cordero, she's sitting to my left, and she represents District Three.
Because if I'm not mistaken, was it?
That was mine a year ago, yes, ma'am.
And I didn't know who to go to, all right, excellent.
Thank you for your comments.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a good evening, everyone.
You too, have a good evening.
Those were all our speakers, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. So we're moving on to consent agenda. There is a slight discrepancy on Agenda Item Six. Instead of the month of December, it should have read November. So we'll be taking action on either approving or disapproving, with the exception of Item Six. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of moving December 13?
No, 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 it has to be, we're deleting Item Six.
Oh, okay. Motion to consent agenda with deleting Item Six. Motion to approve consent agenda. And delete Item Six.
A second.
So there's been a motion, second and third, to consent agenda with the deletion of Agenda Item Number Six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. And so we'll be moving on to the regular agenda. And you know, council, I don't, I don't want to keep our neighbors waiting. I know there's a large group of individuals here that are waiting to hear about Agenda Item Number 35. Would anyone like to entertain a motion to move Agenda Item up on the list?
Motion to move Item 35 up.
A second.
So there's been a motion by Mr. García and a second by Ms. Rojas to move Agenda Item 35 before 12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. At this time, we're going to be presenting Agenda Item 35. And this is the discussion in action regarding petition to release the following real property from the acres described as Vista Bonita subdivision blocks, I'm sorry, releasing the property from the city of Socorro's extraterritorial jurisdiction, approximately 2,000, I'm sorry, 2.689 square miles, or 1,830.4 acres described as Vista Bonita subdivision. These are blocks 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, Pecan Valley Estate subdivision blocks 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, Grijalva subdivision block 1, Athena West subdivision blocks 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, Angels Park subdivision blocks 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 40, 42, 43, 44, and San Elizadio Grant blocks 22, 23, 24, and 36.
Motion to approve?
Second.
So I have Mr. Perez presenting this item as per the agenda.
Mayor, with your permission, may I address this?
Go ahead, Mr. Montez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jim Martinez, City Attorney. Your staff has done the analysis on this, I think we've talked in the past. First of all, let me make sure I understand, I have council's permission. Generally, my advice to council is done in closed session because it's privileged, is it council's wish that I address this in open session today?
How do you all feel? I know in the past, we've discussed these types of items in executive. I'd like to personally discuss this in open session in front of the residents of all of these blocks and the applicants. But again, it's up to you. But again, it's up to you all how you'd like to proceed.
For purposes of transparency, I agree to leave it open.
I need a consensus on the table. Do we want to discuss on the table in open session or would you like to enter into executive?
Let's do it here.
Open session's fine.
Okay, so there's a consensus. Mr. Martinez, we can go ahead and discuss this in open session.
Understood, thank you, council. Your staff did the analysis, as you may recall, there's a recipe, there's a statute that says there's one of two ways you can satisfy the requirement. And once it's satisfied, then it's just a ministerial act. The city is required to release the jurisdiction, to release that property from the ETJ. It's either a majority of the voters or a majority by value of the land, of the owners of the land. A majority by value is determined by the CAD. Your staff has done the analysis. This petition doesn't meet either requirement. They don't have the right number, a sufficient number of voters. And then using the CAD data, they don't have a majority of the owners of the value of the land. A majority... I'm sorry. They don't have the owners of a majority of the value of the land. So in light of that, your staff's recommendation is to deny the petition.
Mr. Martinez? This is something that's new for us. Oh, it's new for me, at least this body. But can I ask? Because I've read the rules. These types of applications are something that they... Whether a municipal or local government agrees or disagrees or votes to disapprove by law, Texas law, it's still... It's still... It still goes through. But if they meet the requirements... But the requirements that are not being met right now, that's something that the applicants have to go back and correct? Or they just, they don't meet it?
There's no... The statute... Well, let me start with your comment. It's new. It is new. It's relatively new in Texas law. Municipalities around the state are struggling with this. They're figuring out how to navigate this issue. There's a couple of parts of the statute that I wish they were written differently. You kind of have to think, well, I guess that's what they meant. It's not altogether clear. It says, for instance, it says a majority of the voters of the area. Okay. Well, the voters who live there or the voters who own property there? Or does it have to be both? Or does it mean something else? It's just, it's not clear. It says the voters of the area. But to answer your specific question, the statute doesn't contain any tail. It doesn't contain any winded provision. Like a rezoning application, which, you know, if it fails, the ordinance says and the statute says, you've got to wait a year. You've got to wait one calendar year to come back. That's not in this statute. The way I read that then means that they're free at any time to try to come back and submit a new petition that does have a majority of the owners or a majority of the voters, rather, or the owners of a majority of the value of the land by value.
It's just, it's time-consuming for our staff to have to sit there and go through every single description of the blocks and then also the coordination with the El Paso County Elections Committee as well. What can we do to help the applicants in this? Because I think it's fair to say that Socorro is not in disagreement. I just feel that if this is something that we were to approve right now, what are the consequences for them in the future in trying to submit this application once again? I mean, it gets denied.
Yeah, I don't think you can... I mean, the way the statute is written, it's a very narrow path. It's very simple, but it's very narrow. There's one of two criteria. You meet this recipe one way or the other, or you don't. And the way the statute's written, you can... The city can only release it, can only grant the petition if one of those criteria is met. And the negative implication is, well, if neither of those criteria is met, then the city cannot release it. And so my point is, I don't think the city's authorized to do that right now. I don't think the city has legal grounds to grant the petition, to the release and to release the ETJ in light of the numbers of voters who have signed it and in light of the total value owned by the people who did sign it.
What's our liability if we do or we don't release?
Yeah, that's not clear. The problem with real estate is it's expensive and you're talking about a fairly large piece of real estate here. This is a big area. And if you can't tell from the subdivision and block descriptions in the agenda item, there's hundreds and hundreds of individual parcels. So, I mean, that's millions of dollars at the very least. I don't... To me, that's concerning. I wouldn't advise council to do that unless you... To grant it unless you're confident that you have a solid legal basis to rely on, like a majority of the voters or a majority of the owners, the owners of a majority of the value of the land.
And what do these individuals have to do to... That's what they want, which we're trying to give it to them.
I... Yeah, I think it's just math. I mean, if you bring more... If you get the signatures of more of the voters, I mean, if... Say there's six hundred voters. Well, if you came in with five signatures of five hundred of them, that'd be pretty easy. That wouldn't be a very difficult call, similarly in terms of value. Let's just take a number. Let's say that the land's worth twenty-five million dollars. Well, if the owners come in and it turns out the these... This handful of owners own twenty million of it, well, that'd be... And they're all petitioners, that'd be a fairly easy analysis. So something like that. I mean, for the short term, I guess to give you a broader answer, the applicants are free to continue to try. I mean, they can try to get more signatures.
Do any other members of council have any questions or...
I got a comment. How come we keep bringing this item if it's incomplete? Who has to... I mean, not to be disrespectful to the persons bringing the item. I just don't want to be wasting nobody's time to get all of you guys here and then we can't pass it because it's not the right item. I'm just giving a comment. Is there a way for the city to... If they bring it again, look into it? If it's gonna... Yeah, if it's gonna be able to vote on it, we'll bring it to council. If not, let them know that it's not complete.
Yeah, the answer is, under current law, no. The way the statute's written, there's no prohibition against them trying again. And the reason it's here is because they've submitted another petition. Each time we brought it to council, they've submitted a petition. And it's either an amended petition, a revised petition, they supplemented some part of it. And every time they've done that, your staff has said, well, okay, that's new information. That's a new item. We'll process it, we'll do the analysis, and we'll present it to council.
So let's just say, if they keep changing it a little bit at a time, they could potentially bring it a hundred times till they get it correct?
Under the current state of the law, I think that's true, as odd as it seems. What you would need to prevent that kind of thing from happening is a provision like I talked about before. I referred to the zoning change ordinance. Where if you fail, if you don't, if the zoning change is denied, you've got to wait. There's a waiting period. You've got one calendar year before you can ask again. That kind of limitation is not in the statute. Okay.
I have a comment. I'm assuming at this point, that piece was not clear to the constituents and is why they keep trying? I'm assuming and wondering if that's the reason, you know...
I don't know. Your staff was the one involved in the analysis.
So I believe that question is to the petitioner.
Yes. I just wanted to make a broad statement in order for them to analyze the statement.
So I believe we had a speaker for this item?
Yes, we do. We have to.
Okay.
Kyle Greenup?
Yes.
You were aware.
You get to speak again.
I pretty much finished my... What I had to say. One thing I can add is what we haven't been given or what hasn't been shared with us is what your council feels we failed at. Because we feel we met the state requirements. The state requirements are a minimum of fifty percent of the voters. We feel we exceeded that, actually. I think we had over six hundred...
We have five hundred, verified, five hundred and nineteen signatures verified independently. And you guys said you guys did.
So what... Did we get forty-nine percent according to council? Did we get thirty percent? What... The land value, I understand. It's going to be very, very difficult to do that because a lot of landowners are out of town. So it's going to be very difficult, especially the new commercial development. It's going to be difficult to add them as far as signatures for land value. But for registered voters, there was a lot of confidence that that number had been exceeded. So I don't know if that can be shared by council or by whoever did the analysis? Or do we have to schedule a meeting? What do we have to do?
Mayor, what's worth I can tell you? I don't have that information. I didn't do that analysis. Your staff did.
Right, so that would be...
That would be after I'm looking up the values. I mean, the structure may be in what the county has the total number of voters in the initial letter. You say there were nine hundred across the floors in the area. And there are... I'm just going to try to look it up a little bit. Over a thousand. So the percent was forty-four percent. I have a little pretty email where I responded to administration to give you the exact numbers. And the other thing that was a likely issue is the date the individuals registered. So they had to have registered by a certain date. And that's the registration law that I received from the county election office. So hopefully, there wasn't an issue where people were registering and then signing the petition. They had to have been registered by a certain date. And I would never think that gave us a twenty...
I have a question. So who's helping you all with your application? Because I feel like we're trying to do our best and give you all the information that we're allowed to give you and have our attorneys work. They cannot cross a certain line because they work for the city, our attorneys. Who's helping you all with your application?
You know, it's irrelevant who's helping us, honestly. It's more relevant on following the law. There's nothing in this law which is that state's valuation. If that's the case, I'll value mine twenty million dollars, my property. He'll value his, he'll value his. And we'll get it, we'll bump it up to silly valuations. The law states fifty percent of the registered voters. We got our registered voter from the county. We got our log and we walk these streets just like any politician does. You get your logs and if he wants to go by property owners... I concentrated on property owners and our petition has a lot of property owners. Because I would ask any property owners or registered voters. And believe it or not, there's a lot of youth that were registered. And there were more adults that were just property owners. But I got them to sign too. And to go through this, to me, this saying of the valuation, it goes beyond what's reasonable. We're told, follow the rules, go by the registered voters. We humped it, we walked and the dogs chased us. I mean, this is why, just like when, here, the... Just like when... People were... Okay, we verified, and we had that. We paid for the five hundred and nineteen verified signatures out of nine hundred. You guys never gave us what you guys verified. The county of El Paso said, they're not going to verify it until there's a lawsuit. When there's a lawsuit, then they'll verify it because it's expensive. So that we need to believe Socorro didn't verify these things. If they verified, I want to see this proof. I want to get the open records and see where the proof of the verified thing is. But we went to our expense to do this. To me, this is just a delay tactic of these bunch of morons are going to go away. They'll run out of money eventually. But all you're doing is making a bunch of people angry. And just like he said earlier, Socorro went through this with El Paso. And I think you guys would have some sympathy there and say, hey, you know what? These guys, they want to preserve their lifestyle. Just like I was going to ask them to play the video of your homepage. You guys have this very pretty thing, horses running, cotton fields, pecans. Guess what? They're gone. All these things are gone. And it's ironic, you don't put a warehouse in there. And it's just like, it's just like all these data centers coming into our areas. We don't have the water, but everybody sure wants them. And that's what we're trying to preserve, our quality of life, just like you guys did forty years ago. And if we have obstacles, then tell us the obstacles. Don't just say, I refuse it because of the land. So if your attorney is saying this, I just want to see where the paperwork is and give us something. Instead of waiting two weeks to get it from... And Ms. Olivia has been awesome. And she gives me the stuff and then I go and we go back and we pay for all this stuff, we get this done. So it's like you're just developing an enemy as far as by you guys dragging your feet. And this thing about the valuation, it's nonsense. I mean, who would have thought that the farm, CP Brown's farm, would have sold for as much as it did? Nobody has that. But it did, so it sold. So these valuations are just... They're nothing. And it's just, we need to know because you guys keep moving the ball. The law was very simple. You made fifty percent. Nothing about land valuations was on that, on that law. So to us, we had nine hundred and something registered voters. We got five nineteen verified by us. If you guys verify it, I want to see that. And it's like, I'm trying to be nice about this because I live, I work in this community. And heck, you guys are a customer of mine. And so I don't want to be that guy that does that. So I mean, whatever it is we need to do, I want your attorney to be open about it. Because if he's kicking the cans, because it almost seems like he's in the pocket of the developer. And it sounds bad, but why else would they restrict that? We just want a better life.
So we're trying to comply with you all and I think Mr. Martinez had a statement that he wanted to give in reference to your inquiry.
Yes, sir. To be clear, I haven't kicked any cans today. The reference to the value of the land is not something I made up. It was written by the Texas Legislature. I'll read a short portion of the statute. A petition requesting release under this subchapter must be signed by more than fifty percent of the registered voters of the area described by the petition as of the date of the preceding election or a majority in value of the holders of title of the land in the area described by the petition as indicated by the tax rolls of the applicable central appraisal district. That's the law.
So...
Oh, and I can tell you one more thing. The Elections Department is our source of information, your staff's source of information for the number of voters of the area. According to the County of El Paso's Election Department, there are one thousand seventy-six voters.
Did you get the revised one? And just in Angels Park, I had nine deaths and I had one house with twelve registered voters. And when we went back to get the revised list, guess what? That house only had one. And so...
So who did you get the revised list from?
We got it from the county.
Okay, that's the county and we're getting our information from the county as well. So we have the same information that you're asking for. The thing is, is I don't think it's a question of the amount of voters that you guys got. I think it's a question of when they registered to vote and they were added to your petition. We're not... I'm speaking with all honesty and just transparency. That's why we did it in open session. I didn't want to go kick everybody out and talk about this behind closed doors. I think it's fair. We are trying, we're trying to help you all as much as you all can. That's why I asked, who's helping you all? Because I think you guys need either someone else to help you or maybe an attorney to help you all understand the laws. I've had to understand this too. I've had to do research on this. I've never dealt with something like this. I've had to read up a lot on this.
Yeah, we're not asking for any concessions. We're not asking to do something that isn't defined by law by any means. We were just very confused why we felt we were so confident or why we were so confident in the number. And it appears... And it appears there's a different number out there. So what we'd really like is just some cooperation. And that's why I said earlier, how do we get this? Do we schedule a meeting?
Yes.
Everybody throws everything on the table and say, look, this is what we have, what do y'all have, uh, and, uh, if it's cooperative, it's great. We don't want it to be adversarial and you're making that point that you don't want it to be either. So if we can somehow get together and start comparing our data and find out where the discrepancy is, we're willing to correct it.
Yeah, and I think that, that, that's where the confusion comes because I understand that our, 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 our staff and our attorneys can only do so much of the work. They'll, they'll do the work that they have to, but they, they can't, they can't do the work for you. I know it sound, I know it sounds ugly, but you guys are the applicant, right? It's like, it's like any developer that comes in and they apply for a permit or some, so we, we're not gonna do it for them because we don't know what they wanna build. Um, I think it's fair though that our, our staff has, has, has always, uh, been, um, welcoming and open to sitting down with, with the initial applicant or applicants, um, and they can actually sit down and, and like tell you, this is what y'all are lacking.
Yep.
Um, and I know it's difficult to understand, especially with all of the legal terms that, that they use in the legislature or the law. It's hard to understand some, some of these words. But, uh, also what is the magic number, right? What's the magic number that we need to hit? I think you guys got the numbers. The thing is, is that your registered voters that you added to your list now, they were not registered at the deadline that they had to be registered at, right? They had to be registered in the, in the previous, um, election?
County election or?
So there's, there's certain factors, right? And we can definitely set up a meeting and, and sit down and discuss. Right now, we're looking at a forty-four, forty-five percent of registered voters. So you're just missing a, maybe a five percent. I don't have that exact number in front of me, but what we do know is that you're not meeting that fifty percent based on our analysis, right? So we can definitely sit down and, and discuss that. But nobody has really ever wanted to schedule a meeting. The petition, it, you know, but we're always available to meet with the public and, and make sure that we sit down and, and discuss it.
Schedule a meeting with, with, um, the applicant or applicants and then, um, if, if y'all need to walk a few more houses and get chased by a few more dogs and so be it. Um, I'm, I'm, we'll get there. We'll get there eventually. Um, we, we, we're, we're not trying to be difficult with y'all, but I, I do know that, um, if, if, if this is something that we, that we were to approve today, that, that would be careless on our, on our behalf, honestly. We would, that would be careless.
We wanna do it, we wanna do it the right way.
And so do we. Um, we, 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 we'd be taking shortcuts and we wouldn't be doing y'all justice if we were to approve this and it's incorrect. We, we don't wanna do that. If, if that's fair to y'all.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you for understanding and for being cooperative. Um, you know, name-calling and being aggressive and being, it's not gonna get us anywhere. We're trying to be as transparent to support everybody. You know, this is, this is what you want. We're trying to get it along with you. Um, but, you know, we don't wanna be enemies. We all live in Socorro. We all care for Socorro. And I truly appreciate that you were understanding and cooperative.
Likewise. Thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Ms. Navarro, do we have any more public speakers or speakers on this side of here?
No, we have no more speakers.
Please, motion. Um.
We just need to amend the motion.
No, so we, uh, yeah, we have to amend, amend it, right?
I'd like to amend the motion to deny. Uh. Motion to deny.
The petition.
Just second.
Okay. So there's been a motion and second to deny the petition at this time?
Hold me that second.
Uh, Ms. Rojas and Mr. Garcia, uh, motioned. And so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? That motion carries. We're gonna move on to agenda item number twelve. This is a, um, public hearing of an ordinance, number six thirty-five, amendment number four, amendment to decrease in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. It's six fifty-two P M. And public hearing is now open.
No speakers, mayor.
Thank you. As there are no speakers, we're gonna go ahead and close it at six fifty-two as well. And we move on to agenda item thirteen. This is the second reading and adoption of ordinance, number six thirty-five, amendment number four, amendment to decrease in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Motion to approve.
Second. Good evening, mayor and council. Adriana Rodarte, city manager for the city of Socorro. Tonight, I'm presenting the final budget amendment for the previous fiscal year. This amendment is necessary to ensure that our year-end financials securely, um, reflect actual expenditures and revenues. We are requesting approval to reduce the overall budget by forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. This adjustment is the result of a year-end reconciliation and reflects a true financial activity for this fiscal year. As included in your backup material, we have provided a detailed explanation of the fund codes being increased and decreased. These adjustments are routine housekeeping measures to allow us to align the budget with actual spending patterns. By doing so, we maintain accurate financial reporting and ensure compliance with auditing and accounting requirements. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Do any members of council have any questions or comments on this item?
No.
No? Uh, there was a motion to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Any opposed or abstain? That motion carries. Agenda item number fourteen. This is a public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed Aldama Estates Replat D subdivision being a replat of Lot Nine, Block Two, Aldama Estates subdivision and located at one one zero three three Sunny Brook Lane, Socorro, Texas. It's six fifty-four P M. And public hearing is now open.
No speakers, mayor.
Okay. As there are no speakers, we'll go ahead and close public hearing at six fifty-four P M. as well. Agenda item number fifteen. This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed Aldama Estates Replat D subdivision being a replat of Lot Nine, Block Two, Aldama Estates subdivision and located at one one zero three three Sunny Brook Lane, Socorro, Texas. Motion to approve.
Second.
Good evening, mayor and council. Marine Kimito City Planner. The first item on the agenda from the planning and zoning department is item number fifteen. The property Aldama Estates subdivision replat D is located at, uh, uh, Lot Nine, Block Two, Aldama Estates. The property owner, Josefina Contreras, and her representative, Maria, uh, G. Robles, of GRV Integrated. Um, uh, Ms. Robles is in the audience to answer any questions should council have any after the presentation. Uh, the property is, uh, just under an acre in size. It is currently zoned R one. And the current land use is residential. The request is for approval of a replat, uh, to divide the current lot into two. The staff recommends approval of the replat request. The zoning, planning and zoning commission voted to approve the request three to zero at their November fourth meeting. The property is located, uh, on Sunny Brook, Sunny Brook Lane. It is R one, surrounded by R one zoning, single-family residential zoning. These are photographs taken of the property from a Sunny Brook Lane. The aerial shows the single-family home at the front of the property and, uh, the, the area to the rear. And as previously stated, the purpose of the replat is to divide the lot into two. Uh, one would be, uh, just under seventeen thousand square feet, square feet. And the second one would be twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-two square feet with access to the rear, uh, off of Sunny Brook. And in summary, the request is for approval of a replat for Aldama Estates Replat D. And staff can answer any questions. And again, the applicant's representative is also in attendance.
Can, can y'all bring up the, uh, the last slide before the questions? Uh, next one. So the, um, the image that we're seeing right here is, is that, that small, long, thin, that narrow entrance? Is that the way into the property?
To the rear, yes. And, and you can see it in the photograph?
Okay, well, will, will that be part of that rear property?
Yes.
And the reason I'm asking is because we, we see this all over Socorro, the, the, our old, uh, parts of the community, right? Where the properties get sold off and then the front neighbor seals off the entrance and they're landlocked now and there's, there's no way to get utilities in. They don't let me drive through there no more and I don't have a way into my property. So that, this takes care of.
This is a part of the second lot.
Okay, this takes care of it. Um, is Ms. Contreras in the, in the crowd today? Ms. Contreras, uh, can, can you come up to the mic? What, um, what are, what are you all planning to build there?
A few years ago, my husband passed away in twenty twenty.
Sorry to hear that.
And, um, the land, he used to have a shop on the back. He used to build, um, rebuild Harats, Har- uh, old cars with her father, with his father. And after him passing away, I'm having a very hard time paying the taxes for the house because, uh, and I have three daughters in college right now. So right now at this point, I'm trying to sell the back to my father-in-law because he has a sentimental value to him. And, because I wanted to sell the whole house because I couldn't afford it anymore to pay the taxes. But he's willing to pay, uh, to buy the half, the, the back so he can keep it. And that way it will help me pay for the house taxes and he can take care of the back. That's why we wanna do it like this, so we can both benefit from it.
I don't think anybody here has a problem with people making some extra income or, or helping you survive, you and your family, so. Uh, there was a motion and second on the table for this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, any opposed or abstain?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. That motion carries. It passes. Agenda item number sixteen. This is the public hearing of an ordinance for the amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning a portion of track twenty-eight A twenty-two, Block Nine Socorro Grant located at one zero seven five two Melward Road, Socorro, Texas, from R one single-family residential to R two medium-density residential to allow for a duplex. It's seven P M. Public hearing is now open.
No speakers, mayor.
As there are no speakers on this item for public hearing, we're gonna go ahead and close it at seven P M. as well. Agenda item seventeen. This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning a portion of track twenty-eight A twenty-two, Block Nine Socorro Grant located at one zero seven five two Melward Road, Socorro, Texas, from R one single-family residential to R two medium-density residential to allow for a duplex. Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, thank you, mayor and council. Uh, the next agenda item is a rezoning acqu- request. This property is located at track twenty-eight A twenty-two, Block Nine Socorro Grant. The property owner is M E Land Holdings LLC. Their representative, Salvador Samora. The property is eight thousand one hundred and ninety-two square feet in size, currently zoned R one and currently, uh, the land use is a residential duplex. The request is for approval of the rezoning of the property from R one to R two to allow the existing duplex to remain on the property. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval of the request and the planning and zoning commission voted for approval unanimously, unanimously with three members present at their December second, uh, planning and zoning meeting. So the property is located, uh, on Melward, just, uh, uh, east of the, sorry, west of the Mesa Drain. It is zoned R one as well as the property surrounding it. This is a view of, uh, Lutzi called this the subdivision map. This is part of, uh, Socorro Grant of Block Nine supplement. Uh, and shows this, uh, area divided out into tracks and the roads, uh, are dedicated. And there was no date, but this dates back to, to the, the grant. And while there are forty-eight, uh, lots or tracks, uh, it was, it's a, a very, it's a broad mix of different types of construction. There are two vacant lots in the, in the, in the subdivision. The future land use map designates the area as suburban residential. And the aerial image shows the residential building on the property, a storage, uh, unit, a storage, um, unit in the back and the residential and vacant lots surrounding the property. The photograph, um, taken from Melward shows the existing duplex. Notifications were sent to property owners within two hundred feet and we did receive one letter in support of the request. A, a resident who stated that she's a, has lived in the neighborhood for, for fifty-some years uh, sees the im- the improvement that this, uh, investment in this property has done for the, for the neighborhood and it's better than some of the other well-kept, uh, uh, kept? Better kept, better well-kept, uh, than other properties in the neighborhood. The next slide should be the letter. There you go. And the site plan showing again the existing, uh, property, the storage space in the back and the, the parking for the, the two units. In summary, the request is for approval of a rezoning of a property from R one to R two to allow for an existing duplex on the property. Um, with that, staff can answer any questions.
Do any members of council have any questions or comments on this item here?
No, sir.
Okay, there was a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? That motion carries. We're moving on to agenda item number eighteen. This is the public hearing of an ordinance for the amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot Four, Block Nineteen, Friedman Estates, Unit Two, located at four hundred Mosher Way, Socorro, Texas, from R one single-family residential to R two medium-density residential to allow for a duplex. And it's seven oh five P M. Public hearing is now open.
No speakers, mayor.
As there are no speakers, we'll go ahead and close it at seven oh five P M. as well. Agenda item number nineteen. This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot Four, Block Nineteen, Friedman Estates, Unit Two, located at four hundred Mosher Way, Socorro, Texas, from R one single-family residential to R two medium-density residential to allow for a duplex. Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, thank you, mayor and council. The property, uh, four hundred Mosher Way is located in the Friedman Estates, Unit Two subdivision. It is Lot Floor, Lot Four, Block Nineteen. Ava Development LLC is the owner and their representative is Enrique Ayala. The property is a little over ten thousand square feet in size and currently zoned R one. The property is vacant and the future land use map designates the area as suburban residential. In summary, the request is for approval of a rezoning of a property from R one to R two to allow for a, a duplex. And staff recommends approval of the zoning request. Planning and zoning voted for approval three to zero at their December second planning and zoning meeting. Uh, the property is located on, uh, Mosher Way. It is zoned R one and surrounded by R one residential property. Friedman Estates, Unit Two, was, uh, recorded in nineteen eighty-seven. It originally contained two hundred and ninety-seven residential lots. Of those, uh, two hundred and ninety-two are R one and there have been, uh, five rezonings. But R two, there are four un- R twos and one, uh, R three. And there are fourteen vacant lots in the subdivision. Uh, as previously stated, the future land use map designates the area as suburban residential. And the aerial image shows the vacant lot with the, uh, surrounding residential land uses. These are photographs taken from Mosher Way. Public notices were sent to property owners, uh, within two hundred feet of the applicant property. No notices were, uh, received either in favor or against the request. And the site plan, uh, shows the single building with the two units and very much keeping in the, uh, feel of a single building. feel of a single building as, um, it shows the, uh, entryway on, on Mosher and the ponding area in the rear. In summary, the request is for approval of a rezoning of a property from R-one to R-two to allow for a duplex. And with that, staff can answer any questions.
Do council have any questions or comments?
No sir.
Members of council? No? There was a motion and second on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? That motion carries. The next item is agenda item number twenty. This is the public hearing of an ordinance for the amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot Eighteen, Block Four, Lynn Park Replat located at three six six Tanya Drive, Socorro Texas from R-one single-family residential to R-two medium-density residential with a variance from section forty-six dash two fifty-nine. The purpose to allow for an existing quadruplex on the property instead of the three maximum allowable units. It's seven oh nine PM, public hearing is now open.
No speakers ma'am.
As there are no speakers, we'll go ahead and close the public, uh, hearing at seven oh nine PM as well. Agenda item number twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
This is a second, the second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot Eighteen, Block Four, Lynn Park Replat located at three sixty-six Tanya Drive, Socorro Texas from R-one single-family residential to R-two medium-density residential with a variance from section four-six dash two-five-nine. Purpose to allow for an existing quadruplex on the property instead of the three maximum allowable units. Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, thank you mayor and council. The three sixty-six Tanya Drive, uh, rezoning request is from property owner and representing himself Jonathan Villagran. The property is eight thousand five hundred and fifty-nine square feet. It is currently zoned R-one and the current residential land use is a residential quadruplex. The future land use map designates the area as suburban residential and the request is for approval of a rezoning of a property from R-one to R-two to, well, with a variance from section forty-six to fifty-nine to allow for the existing four units on the property instead of the allowable three. Uh, staff recommends approval of the request and the planning and zoning commission recommended approval, uh, three to zero at their December second planning and zoning meeting. The property is, um, on Tanya Road, uh, just near, uh, Horizon Boulevard. The zoning is R-one and it is surrounded by R-one zoning. The Lynn Park subdivision was recorded in nineteen seventy-one and it contained a hundred and fifty-three, fifty-three, uh, lots, uh, originally. There are a hundred and forty-three, uh, R-one lots, two R-twos, two R-threes and four C-one zoned lots, uh, two C-two zoned lots, those mostly on, uh, Horizon Boulevard and then twelve vacant lots. Uh, future land use map designates the area as suburban residential. The next slide should be photo, uh, the aerial photograph showing the existing building, the residential property surrounding the applicant property. And the photographs show, uh, the property on Tanya Drive. This is a quadruplex and, uh, Mr. Villagran, uh, inherited this from his father. It is unclear when they converted this single-family home to a quadruplex, but as far as every, anyone can remember, that's what it was. We did not find any legal non-conforming documentation to show that this was in existence before, uh, the city adopted zoning. Uh, but there, uh, it did blends well with the neighborhood and, uh, we, we had speakers at the planning and zoning commission speak against the request. There was the, the young lady that spoke earlier today as when, as well as a gentleman, uh, sorry, this is not her item, but, um, the gentleman that spoke against it talked about similar concerns with traffic but didn't even realize that that had been a, a quadruplex, uh, for, for a long time. Uh, these are the residents that received notice of the public hearing. Oh, and these are two letters in support of the request and there were two speakers that spoke against the request. Uh, one was in person and one was via phone. Also similar, um, concerns regarding traffic. And, uh, the next slide is the site plan showing the existing building, the parking for the, the four units. Uh, in summary, the request is for approval of a rezoning of a property from R-one to R-two medium-density residential with a variance request to allow for the existing quadruplex on the property instead of the three maximum allowable units. And with that, staff can answer any questions and Mr. Villagran is also, uh, in attendance to answer any questions you may have as well.
Do you all have any questions for, uh, Ms. Kimino or the applicant?
Is it clear that you, you mentioned that it's already a quadruple?
I'm sorry?
Is it already a?
A quadruplex?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's been that way since his father owned it? Uh, central appraisal records show it as being, uh, four units. At just, at some point, probably before any of us were working here, that change happened or and they're just trying to correct something and, um, comply with the city's ordinances.
Okay, so it's already, uh, said as that, it just hasn't been used as that, right?
No, no, it's been used as that.
For four families? So then, okay. I, I'm confused as to why the, they are against it if it's already?
It's already there. They, the gentleman who spoke didn't realize that that was what that was.
No one was against it until they were notified that there's a quadruplex in their neighborhood.
They didn't speak after, uh, after speaking to the applicant and hearing the whole presentation. But they, that, all they did, they did air their concern regarding the traffic. But this won't change anything. Oh, and yeah, this won't change anything since it's already been in, in existence.
It's existent therefore. Okay, thank you.
I guess the only comment I have is, is the language on the item here that's, um, to allow for an existing quadruplex, uh, instead of the three maximum allowable?
Yeah.
Units. What, what, what was planning and zoning's, uh, vote on this? Did they vote on this?
They approved it, three to zero.
unanimous.
And those were the three commissioners in attendance.
And, and that, that this, uh, unit has different gas meters, water meters for all four units?
Mr. Villagran?
Good evening, city council.
Good evening.
Um, so the units, uh, I'm sorry. I rent them as all-inclusive, pretty much. So I pay the gas, electric, um, all utilities as well as the trash can. They just give me a X amount of random money.
You take care of all utilities?
Yes, sir. They all have, all four of them have ACs, they all have boilers, they all have, uh, their own furnace, so everyone lives independently.
And, and the reason you charge, you pay for it is because it's only a, a single unit or each unit has its own plumbing?
No, it's a single unit, man. And then, um, on the car, my dad, my dad, like, he built the house in the nineties, late nineties. He passed away in two thousand seventeen. My mom kept up with the business. She retired. I took over this house in, three years ago and finding out this year that it was quoted wrong, so I'll just fix it.
How, how did the, uh, the need for the application come? Is this something like code compliance?
No, no.
Excuse me.
It all came on, on your own, trying to make things right and being compliant with the city. It's, uh, that's very honorable.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, any other questions from, from council? No? Uh, I believe there was a motion and second on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? Yeah, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next agenda item on the table here is the, uh, agenda item number twenty-two. This is the introduction and first reading and calling for a public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of tract ten G Block Three Socorro Grant located at one zero nine four six Burt Road, Socorro Texas from R-one, single-family residential to A-one agricultural and a variance request from section four-six dash two-nine-three area requirement subsection one to allow for a zero-point-three-eight-three acre property instead of the one acre minimum lot requirement to allow for an existing storage container. It's seven eighteen PM and, well, public hearing is now open.
No speakers ma'am.
As there are no speakers, we'll go ahead and close the public, uh, hearing at seven eighteen PM. Mr. Reyes, can you leave that door open for us, please? That, that one is fine. That's fine. We'll be here. Agenda item number twenty-three is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of tract ten G Block Three Socorro Grant located at one zero nine four six Burt Road, Socorro Texas from R-one single-family residential to A-one agricultural and a variance request from section four-six dash two-nine-three area requirements subsection one to allow a zero-point-three-eight-three acre property instead of the one acre minimum lot requirements to allow for an existing storage container. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you mayor and council. The rezoning request for Burt Road is, uh, presented by, um, the owner, uh, representing himself, Mr. Alejandro, uh, Daniel Abila. The property is point-three-eight-three acres in size and currently zoned R-one. The current land use is residential and the future land use map designates the area as rural residential. The request is for a rezoning of a property from R-one to A-one and a variance from the section forty-six two ninety-three area requirements to allow for a A-one zone property less than one acre. And the purpose is to, uh, allow a storage container. The staff recommended approval of the rezoning and the various, variance request and the planning and zoning commission voted for approval, uh, three to zero at their November second meeting. Uh, the property is located off of, uh, Burt, on Burt Road, off of Horizon, Horizon Boulevard. It is zoned R-one, uh, around the, uh, property, is R-two zoning and, uh, C-one zoning across the street from Burt, on Burt. And the property is located within, uh, section, uh, section of, excuse me, uh, block nine, block three of the Socorro Grant. And the Socorro Grant had, uh, thirty-six tracks and is, what you see now is the development that has occurred on Burt Road. There are three new subdivisions that are in the process of approval or com- uh, final or have been fin- have approv- have been approved by city council, those being Cottonwood Cove Unit Two, Horizon Parks Unit Three and Four. And in the center there in yellow is the applicant's property. The aerial image shows the, uh, trailer that is currently the mobile home that is on the property and toward the rear, uh, farthest away from Burt is the storage, uh, uh, a, a semi-trailer, uh, semi-truck trailer that is current, he is currently using as storage. So he did receive a notice of violation. He has gone to court, uh, to, and has been instructed to remove the trailer and this zoning change would allow him to remove the trailer and replace it with a storage container. So this semi-trailer is not designed for storage and would not be allowed in R-one, would not be allowed in A-one, but he would need to remove the trailer in order to place the allowable storage container. Uh, these are photographs of the property. Uh, the top is from Burt Road and the bottom photograph is taken from the rear of the property. Public notices were sent out to property owners within two hundred feet. No notice, no notices either in support or opposition were received, uh, by staff. No one spoke either in favor or, or against the item at the planning and zoning commission meeting. Uh, this is the site plan that was provided to staff showing the location of the mobile home, uh, the storage container which, uh, the applicant stated is being used to store material for the home that he hopes to build on the property. In summary, the request is for approval of a rezoning of a property from R-one to A-one and a variance from section forty-six two ninety-three area requirement subsection one to allow a point-three-eight-three acre property instead of the one acre minimum lot requirement to place a storage container. Uh, with that, staff can answer any questions and the applicant is, uh, in attendance today to answer any questions that you might have as well.
Any questions from council? Ms. Kimino, I have a question. Um, I, I know that the storage container that they want to use is to store materials for, for a future home build. Once the home is built, I mean, does it go back to residential? Do they have to rezone it again or?
No, he can continue to occupy the lot with his, in his new home. He would have to remove the mobile home that he's currently living in because he would only be allowed one, um, single-family home on the property. But the storage container would be allowed to stay if he gets rezoned to A-one.
There's no conditional use permits for storage containers on residential properties right now?
No.
And, and there's no agricultural, uh, activities being done on the property? It's just the zoning?
Yes, just for the zoning, yes.
In order to place, uh, storage?
Uh, we have had a case, uh, for this property in the past. He has a horse, so that's rural. But no farming agriculture that ever wear up. But that might be a question for the applicant.
I, I like the storage container look better than the semi-trailer. Looks better. Um, any, any, uh, questions on this item here? Uh, there was a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. The next item is agenda item twenty-four. This is a public hearing of an ordinance for the amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot One, Block Twelve, Alameda Estates Replat Subdivision located at one zero three seven one Manzana Drive, Socorro Texas from R-one single-family residential to R-two medium-density residential to allow for a triplex. It's seven twenty-six PM and the public hearing is now open.
No speakers ma'am.
As there are no speakers, we have one speaker. We have one speaker.
Good evening, mayor and council. Juan Baketa, Resilient Management Team. Um, I'm the representative here. Um, it's for a triplex. I have a, a presentation if, if we can give it. Okay, um, then we can wait. If you have any questions, I'll be here.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll allow you to, uh, present the item when it gets presented and there's discussion. So no, no speakers?
No speakers ma'am.
Okay. Uh, agenda item number twenty-five, this is the second reading.
So we close the?
I'm sorry, we're gonna close the public hearing at seven twenty-six PM. Agenda item number twenty-five, the second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot One, Block Twelve, Alameda Estates Replat Subdivision located at one zero three seven one Manzana Drive, Socorro Texas from R-one single-family residential to R-two medium-density residential to allow for a triplex.
Um, I would like to make a motion to postpone this item to the first meeting of January due to the, um, the resident who came and couldn't speak on this item. But that's my motion.
A second.
Okay, so, uh, there's a table and just, just mind you, uh, we, we did host, uh, public hearing today and there's already been, uh, planning and zoning meeting that took place on this item. There's been a motion by Mr. Garcia and a second by Ms. Rojas to post- to postpone this item to the next meeting. And our January 1 meeting is canceled, right?
Correct.
Our first meeting in January.
The 15th.
15th.
So there's been a motion and a second on the table to postpone the item unless there's another motion and you all want to discuss this item today.
Make a motion to approve?
So then there's another motion to approve the discussion on this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Jim, in these instances, I have the first motion. Does that trump the second?
Yes, it received the second, correct?
Yeah, so there was a motion by Mr. Garcia and a second by Ms. Rojas to postpone the item?
Yeah, but once you have that, once you have a motion and a second, if there's no further deliberation, you need to vote on it.
Okay, so we're going to take the vote on the first motion and second to postpone the item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any posers abstain?
Nay.
There's one nay on the table, and everyone else approved it. Okay, so it's been approved and this item will be postponed to the first meeting in January. Do you know if the resident that came to speak on this item will be here at that meeting?
I'm not sure.
Will you contact her?
Yeah, I'll try to get her information. I just want to make sure that everybody who needs to speak on this item and she had to leave for her second job has the opportunity to during public forum.
Okay. And we're going to move on then to agenda item 26. This is the public hearing of an ordinance for the conditional use permit to allow for a mechanic shop in a C2 general commercial zoning district on tract 5K5, Lake Clark Survey 293, located at 1110 Visa Road, Socorro, Texas. It's 7:30 PM, public hearing is now open.
No speakers, Mayor.
As there are no speakers, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:30 PM. Agenda item 27. This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the conditional use permit to allow for a mechanic shop in a C2 general commercial zoning district on tract 5K5, Lake Clark Survey 293, located at 1110 Visa Road, Socorro, Texas. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 27 is a conditional use permit. The owner and representative, Coronado Briseño, is requesting the conditional use permit to allow for a mechanic shop in a C2 general commercial zoning district. The property is 20,223 square feet in size and its current land use is commercial. Staff recommends approval of the request and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted for approval 3 to 0 at their December 2 meeting. The property is off of Nancy on Visa Road, just at the edge of the city limits. It is a C2 surrounded by M1 industrial, light industrial. The future land use map designates the area as regional commercial. The aerial image shows the property with the existing building and parking for the trucks to the rear and automobiles up front. These are site photographs of the property showing the existing building and the parking. Public notices were sent out to property owners within 200 feet. Notices were received either in favor or against the request, and no one spoke at the planning and zoning meeting. This is a site plan that was submitted, again depicting the existing building, the truck parking. And in summary, the request is for approval of a conditional use permit to allow for a mechanic shop in a C2 general commercial zoning district. With that, staff can answer any questions. And Mr. Briseño might be on the phone? No, no, okay.
Do any members of council have any questions on this item?
Ms. Laredo, is this the one, is this the property behind McDonald's on Horizon?
You have to go farther down. So that side street is Nancy. So on the side of McDonald's is Nancy. And if you go all the way down before you get to the county, the city limits, you turn left to go up to the freeway. It's on that road, Visa.
Yeah, so the general commercial zoning on this right here, was this a code violation that they now had to request the use?
Yes, code went out and there was no business registration and they followed up with that. They registered the business and then met with staff to understand what their zoning options were and they decided to go ahead and request the conditional use permit.
After these permits are approved, is there follow-up by code compliance to make sure? Because, yeah, they may have been operating as a mechanic shop and whatnot, but is there any follow-up to make sure that the disposal of certain fluids, chemicals, oils are being disposed of correctly and all that? Is that something that we do?
Our code officers are, you know, responsible for maintaining the integrity of our community, right? The three code enforcement officers do their best to try to address all of the code infractions that exist, so.
What I'm getting at is if it was operating without the proper permits, they may have to outfit their facility now with new equipment that requires by law mechanic shops to have.
Yeah, that would be probably more in the role of the building official, right? Because code enforcement catches things that they can see from the street. But we can investigate that further.
As long as we follow up and make sure that they're in compliance. Any questions or comments on this one here? Okay, there was a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any posers abstain? That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Camilo. We're moving on to our Human Resources Department. Can we turn down the? Please.
Thank you, my nose is freezing.
Agenda item 28. This is the discussion in action to approve the revision of C10 Dress and Personal Appearance Standards Policy addressed in the Employee Handbook dated August 18, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Carol Gondaladia here, HR Director. So this discussion in action is to approve the revision of this C10 dress policy that was originally updated in our August 18 Employee Handbook. And the reason for the determination to redo this policy was because we felt it was overly restrictive. So while maintaining the professional image remains important, the city recognizes the needs to be flexible and to better accommodate some of the employees in their roles and comfort and practical workplace needs without compromising professionalism and to service the quality of our business. The revision was discussed with the Human Resources Director, myself, of course. I talk to myself. And the city manager. And the, right. And the Civil Service Commission did approve the revised policy on our meeting on November 24 of 2025. I'm here to answer any questions if you'd like.
Any questions or comments for Carol? What were some of the major revisions that you, off the top of your head?
Off the top of the head, shoe restrictions. We took away some of the shoe attire. Felt it was a little bit restrictive. We also changed a little bit of some dress attires that was, we felt a little bit restrictive. We did invoke, of course, our Friday casual day. Also, those that wear ties quite often, they don't have to wear ties on Fridays, especially during the summertime. So some of those were some of the revisions.
Except Victor, Victor every day.
Boots was removed. And now it's added. It's added, correct. Well, it was added as a restriction. And of course, with a number of comments, we took it off. So they are now allowed to wear cowboy boots and open-toe shoes, especially for the women, so, yeah.
I was going to say, I would have felt bad walking in here. Our staff wouldn't be allowed wearing cowboy boots.
Yes.
It's the only time I get to wear my boots.
Right. And Chief wears them all the time, so we had to make some exceptions.
Chief wears boots too.
Yes.
It wouldn't sit well, Carol. You'd be sitting in the back of that patrol unit.
Yes.
Okay. Well.
Had a lengthy conversation with myself.
In the mirror, yeah. There's, there was a motion and second for the approval and the revisions of our dress code and the personal appearance standards policy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any posers abstain? That motion carries. Agenda item 29 is also the discussion in action to approve the revision of C.07, Personal Relationship in the Workplace Addressed in the Employee Handbook dated August 18, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Carol Gondaladia here, HR Director. So this discussion in action was to approve the revision of this personal relationship in the workplace policy. With this, the city had updated the policy to establish stricter guidelines. The policy prevented, is preventing personal relationship in the workplace to protect the professionalism and integrity of our organization. The previous policy focused mainly on supervisors and subordinate relationships, but the revised policy now addresses all romantic dating and close personal relationships between employees, vendors, and any of the conducting business with the city. These changes were necessary to maintain a professional, respectful, and unbiased work environment. Personal relationships at work can create issues involving fairness, safety, confidentiality, favoritism, harassment, concerns, and overall the operation of the integrity of the City of Socorro. By strengthening this policy, the city is reinforcing its commitment and its fairness, transparency, and the workplace where all employees can perform their duties without distinction or with conflict of interest. This discussion was also discussed with the HR Director, the city manager, and it was approved in our Civil Service meeting that was held on November 24 in 2025.
Any questions or comments on this policy? Does our K9 have to adhere to the same policies?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure in case we get another K9. There was a motion and second on this item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any posers abstain? That motion carries. Agenda item 30. This is the discussion in action to approve the revision of C.01, Time and Attendance Policy Addressed in the Employee Handbook dated August 18, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. Carol Gondaladia, once again here for the Human Resources Department. The revision of the CO1 Time and Attendance Policy integrated is to address the new integration with our new payroll software, reinforcing the city's commitment to high quality of service and workforce reliability and fairness across the department. The update ensures accuracy and timekeeping, consistency in operation, and clear expectation for each of the employees. These changes are shown in the draft in our policy, which are highlighted in yellow. With this change in policy, a couple of things have happened. It is now going to allow employees who are issued a city cellphone the ability to punch in and punch out on their city cellphone as long as they're in a facility within the City of Socorro, that they're allowed to go ahead and punch in. Because of the number of personnel that we have in the police department and our public works, sometimes the crowdedness of the punch clock is over cumbersome. So it allows them the ability to do that as long as they are supervised with their, and approval with their supervisor. But it also requires them to be engaged and ready and willing to be able to work, not to come in and punch in and then get ready for work. They have to already be prepared. In addition to this, because of our on-call status, we have quite a number of employees who end up getting called into service or called at home for comments or et cetera. So this also allows them the ability to calculate their times efficiently and thus preventing the supervisor from having to do manual adjustments on their time tickets at the end of the day. So it also reduces the number of personnel in terms of having to do a lot of manual adjustments, prevents our payroll department to have to do that, as well as our finance department. With that, the revisions were discussed with myself, of course, and with the city manager. And Civil Service did approve the change in this policy in their last meeting on November 24.
I'm glad you all finally decided to go digital. Correct me if I'm wrong, upon receiving a phone call to any department when you're already home, as soon as you get called in, your time starts.
That is absolutely correct, sir, especially for those individuals that are on call. So they're on call, they're waiting to be called in, and if they get called at home, their ability to be able to clock their time immediately at that point.
It saves so much time. They can respond to whatever they have to do instead of having to drive all the way to the office, punch in, and then go take care of business and come back and punch out. They're able to do it from their cellphone or their city laptop.
Absolutely. It does give the employee a lot of self-control and their own attendance, verifying their punches, approving their time, and they also have a visual of their time check, rather, their paycheck and what they're going to receive from that pay period. So if there's an error, they'll know they're short, so they'll jump on it immediately.
Great, thank you. There was a motion and second on this item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any posers abstain? Okay, that motion carries. We're moving on to-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gondaladia, thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on to the Grants Department. This is the discussion in action to approve work authorization number 6 in the amount of 1.7 million, well, under contract 22-07-01 with the Camacho Hernandez and Associates for Design Phase Services for the Moon Road Complete Streets Planning Project, and authorized the city manager to sign the agreement. This work is 100% grant-funded. This work is one hundred percent grant funded.
Motion to approve, second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Alejandro Ladez, City Development Director. We are requesting your approval for a work authorization with Camacho Hernandez and Associates for the Moon Road Complete Streets Planning Project. As you may know, recently, the US Department of Transportation awarded the city of Socorro a one point seven million dollar grant in order to complete a complete streets planning project along a two point one seven mile corridor on Moon Road extending from Socorro Road all the way up to Grijalva. And this is to enhance all the safety infrastructure for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for wheelchair users. The planning project will also look at transit, potential transit stops. It'll look at improving safety on the railroad crossings. It'll also look at improving safety across the Moon Bridge for some of those pedestrians, given that we don't currently have any pedestrian crosswalks through Moon for, especially for kids that go to Socorro High School and have to cross that alongside the motorized vehicles. The project will include environmental analysis, community engagement, engineering and design, and ultimately a benefit cost analysis, giving us a shovel-ready planning project that we can then apply for construction dollars from the Federal Highway Administration. And, and the work is grant funded.
Any members of council have any questions?
Just a comment, I'm, I'm super excited to hear that. I remember myself walking home from the high school and I live by Grijalva, well, my mom did, where I grew up. So I'm happy to hear that there's gonna be, you know, an area for people to walk, students to walk safely.
The distance for design phase is going to cover from, from where to where exactly?
It's gonna come from Grijalva Road, which is above North Loop, all the way down Moon Road, cross the railroad, cross the Moon Bridge on Alameda, and then take, take you all the way down to Socorro Road. There are some limitations in terms of right of way in some sections. So some areas are gonna include bicyclist shared use paths where there's enough right of way, but some on those limited areas, it will at least have ADA accessibility and sidewalks so that people are able to cross through, all the way through the corridor.
Do we, do we have a, a timeline of?
So we are currently waiting on the final contract from FHWA. As you know, there were some federal shutdowns recently, so it's delayed a little bit. As soon as we get word from the FHWA, we will then have a project kickoff meeting. And then the planning phase is expected to be between twelve to sixteen months. And then after that, we'll go out for construction dollars and, and continue the project onward. I wish it was faster, but that's just the way that the, the projects develop.
Yeah, there, there's, there's levels of government that we, we really have no say in how they operate, right? The federal government, certain departments, they, we have our hands tied when they shut down. Okay, there was a motion and, and second on this item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? That motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number thirty-two. This is the discussion in action to approve an amended development agreement between the city of Socorro and AVA Developments LLC to remove the construction of some improvements on Copec Road.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an amendment to a development agreement that council previously approved. The applicant requested to take out the construction of the sidewalks on the opposite side of their development, and the city recommends approving the amendment. There has been a wonderful development. The grant for the PDN Maple Trail would allow us to construct a, a larger project, a shared use path along that sidewalk that's being taken out of the development agreement. And we will get a, a little more than just a sidewalk by being able to use these funds from the PDN Trail Project. Mr. Portillo, the developer is on the line, if you have any questions for him?
Ms. Camilo, in the amended agreement, were there changes to the, was there a financial impact of some sort?
No, it, it ends up being that we.
Scope of work changed and that was it?
Say that, say it again?
The scope of work changed?
Yes, we just took out the, them constructing the sidewalk.
Okay, okay, understood, okay. There was a, a motion and second on this item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Camilo.
Thank you.
Number thirty-three, agenda item, is the discussion in action regarding the petition to release the following real property from the city of Socorro's ETJ, El Paso Central Preso District Property ID numbers, tax parcels are seven, seven thirty-one ninety-seven, seven thirty-nine two oh two, seven thirty-nine one ninety-eight, seven thirty-nine one ninety-nine, seven thirty-nine two hundred, two eight two six seven six, seven three nine two oh five, seven three nine two oh nine, seven three nine two oh six, seven three nine two one zero, two six seven five eight zero, seven three nine two eleven, and seven three nine two one two.
Motion to approve, second.
Mayor, may I be? So I think council, I've told this to council before on other matters. I represent a number of Tropicana, I have represented a number of Tropicana properties over the years. Typically, I'm able to come to council and disclose that to council and tell them that I don't represent them on whatever particular item is before council. On this item, I've actually represented the applicant, the very company, Clint Holdings, that is, is the applicant, in connection with this property. So in light of that, I am recusing myself from this issue. I'm leaving you without an attorney for this issue, you can always postpone it if you need legal counsel, we'll find someone for you. But I think your staff is gonna address this.
So thank you, Mr. Martinez, for bringing that to our attention. So at this time, council, we have no attorney on this item. So should you wish to ask any technical questions or consult with our attorney, we have no attorney at this time. Just to make you all aware, this is an item that you all wish to postpone, and we can have our city staff and give them a directive to seek other legal counsels for this particular item. You may wish to do so, I just wanted to make that clear to you all here today. We have no attorney on this item right now. Ms. Garcia?
Staff, what do you recommend for this item?
So, good evening, Mayor and Council, Adriana Rodarte, City Manager. This petitioner owns all of the land property, which is comprised of seven tracts with a total area of two hundred and sixty-four point fifty-two acres. Therefore, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, section forty-two point one zero four, the petition is signed by the holder of a majority in value of the property, which meets the requirement. So staff does recommend approval.
Yeah, there was a motion and second already. Just, just for clarification purposes, very, very similar to the applicants that were here earlier in our meeting, also filing a petition to exit the ETJ. This one, I think this one was much cleaner and simpler just because of the fact that the person filing the application owned all of the parcels and, and all of the property ID numbers that have been identified in, in the agenda item to date, rather than multiple property owners that we saw earlier in our meeting. This is an easy approval. Staff was able to identify and provide all information and receive all information from the CAT as well. And they are in accordance with state legislative laws.
That is correct.
Require the release of ETJ properties, okay?
Yes, so they meet that requirement.
Correct, okay. There was a motion and second on this item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? No? That motion carries. Mr. Martinez, you can return back to your seat, we now have an attorney representing the city now. Agenda item thirty-four, this is the discussion in action to approve, Mayor and any other council members who'd like to attend the ninety-fourth winter meeting, January twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, and twenty twenty-six in Washington DC for the US Conference of Mayor.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. This meeting serves as a critical platform for municipal leaders from across the country to engage directly with federal partners, including the White House, members of Congress and key agencies. The primary objective and benefits to attending these type of conferences is advocacy, networking, promotion of the city and sharing best practices. Participation in this conference helps ensure that our city remains informed, visible and engaged at the federal level. It can also support future grant opportunities, legislative partnerships and policy initiatives. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Do any members of council have any questions? No? There was a motion and second on, on this item. Does staff need names now to, of attendance or?
No, Ms. Escobar will reach out to you via email, so you can respond to hers.
There was a motion and second on this item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? That motion carries.
Thank you.
We've already gone through agenda item thirty-five, and so we'll go down to agenda item thirty-six. This is the discussion in action directing city staff to research and prepare an ordinance for the council's consideration restricting the development of warehouse facilities within one point five miles north and south of Socorro Road within the city limits, preserving the historical and cultural character of the Mission Trail and protecting the health, safety and welfare of nearby residents. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
To approve, second.
There's been a motion and second, Mr. Reyes, this is your item, take it away.
We decided to bring this item because there's been a lot of talk about the warehouses being developed here in Socorro. Unfortunately, or fortunately, most of the time we don't choose who comes to Socorro. My dad has a saying, it says, se trabaja con lo que se tiene. We, I think we made it clear that we wanna see more, more stores, more restaurants, but unfortunately, we're getting a lot more warehouses than we might like. The item is just to protect Socorro Road. I know it's getting more and more traffic by, by the day. And the item was for, for one point five miles north and south of Socorro Road. If anybody has, if they wanna do more, more than the one point five miles, it's, it's an item, it's open. I just wanted to protect our, our Socorro Road. In, as much as we can in our city. I know that outside the city, they're, they're building left and right warehouses in Socorro Road, and they're making it a little bit more difficult for, for everybody to, to travel on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, this is, this is, I, I like this item. There's, there's a, a logistics center being built on the Mission Trail right now. I, I went, this was two years ago, I went to speak in opposition, in opposition of it. Fortunately, the council for the city of El Paso, they, they, they passed it, it passed, so then you see the logistics center going up already. But that's something that I don't think I'd like to see on our Mission Trail, at least protect the, the nine miles that we have in our city. If this is something that we can do, then, then I think this is a good item.
I agree.
Is there any other discussion by members of council on this item? None, there was a motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? We have a speaker? Ms. Hendricks? Do we, we gotta cancel the vote, or do we have to amend the?
Suspend the rule. Suspend the rule.
Does anyone wanna make a motion to suspend the rules for Mr. Hendricks to speak?
Make a motion to allow him to speak?
There's a motion and second to suspend the rules for Mr. Hendricks, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, real quick, and I appreciate the exception and the, the moments that you've given me. So as I read this amendment, or whatever we're calling this, item thirty-six on the agenda, I, I noticed that it says a mile and a half north-south of Socorro Road. But Socorro Road already runs north, northwest by south-southeast. So a mile and a half north-south of Socorro Road isn't very clear. So I don't know if you can redefine the language to say maybe east and west, a mile and a half? Just, just a, a point of clarification. But the other question I have is, where did the, and I heard you say the mile and a half is up for debate or whatever, you know? But where'd the mile and a half come from? Because as I get on Google Earth and I draw a mile and a half off Socorro Road, it only covers Alameda. It doesn't go anywhere near North Loop, which again draws me back to all of us on North Loop are getting covered in warehouses and the arterial one, and, and back to where, you know, back to where we're spinning circles, back to where my problem is. And so I, I like that we're trying to protect Alameda and Socorro and the historical area. Look out, if you read that bottom line, look out for the welfare of the residents, and, and it's got safety in there and all those nice bullet points. But what about us on North Loop? We're creating this stupid arterial one that I know is gonna go to the border highway, we'll talk about it later, and I know it's gonna connect to I-ten. And now you're gonna have warehouses up there too that you're not covering with your amendment. You're just covering us in tractor trailers and taking all our farmland. Guys, I've got horses and a farm and, and animals and a life, I wanna live out there. And you're forcing me to try and find another place to live. And I know I'm very off the topic, but my question is, change the language, language to east-west, if that gets a little more clearer, and maybe adjust it to, I don't know, two and a half miles to where you cover North Loop, that would make me happy. But I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. There's a motion and second on this item, do we already take the vote on this item?
Yes, we did.
Did we?
Uh-uh.
Yes, are you sure for the record?
Yes.
Well, I wanna make sure, item thirty-six, there's a motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? That motion carries. Do we have any items for discussion, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, or thirty-nine?
Yes, sir.
No?
Motion to delete items thirty-eight, thirty, thirty-seven, thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Second.
There's been a motion and second to delete items thirty-seven, thirty-eight and thirty-nine, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? That motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There was been a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you.